Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the board, May 12, 2025. Dr. Thompson, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Ms. Hall. Reverend Harrison.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Dr. Molinar.
Present.
Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
Seven present, zero absent.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. We'll now have our pledge of allegiance. Uh, Member Sykes, would you mind leading us with the, in the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Now we will have recognitions by, given by our superintendent.
So, good evening. I am excited to start this portion of our program with recognizing our GOAT. And GOAT stands for Greatest Operations in Attention-to-Task Award. We are excited to announce that the next GOAT award, this special recognition celebrates exceptional work ethics, professionalism, and dedication to their craft. For the month of April, we are thrilled to award this honor to Chris Gross in the Carpenter Department and Rick Skinner in the Carpentry, who is our Carpentry Foreman. So, please join us in congratulating Mr. Gross and Mr. Skinner for their outstanding work. Next, we have our Akron Council of PTA Awards presentation. We have presenters Jill Hiles, the Akron Council of PTA President, and Jeannie Groth Shockling for, which is our Region Five Advisor, if they would please come forth.
Jeannie is not able to actually make it tonight.
Okay. Alrighty. Well, you're enough.
Okay. Do they just come and?
Yes, please. You give us guidance. From this point, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Which way are we facing?
Um, yeah, which way we're supposed to face?
The board?
For you guys?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, so. Our Silver Acorn Award is recognizing people who go above and beyond the call of duty, taking a step out of their role and helping PTAs to better, make a betterment for the students in Akron Public Schools. And so, our first one that we would like to recognize tonight is Diana Autry. Diana is going to be receiving a certificate and a Silver Acorn pin for all of the work that she has done. She has been a very strong PTA advocate. I'm sorry. I'm not used to doing this. I'm really nervous. But she's been a very strong PTA advocate. And when this fall happened and we were trying to do the Fall Conference and it was looking like we were gonna have over $400 in bills to try and even hold it here, she said, "Hold on, no, let me reach out." And she had it solved within like 24 hours for us. So, she, and this is not the first time that she has stepped in to help out. She's just one of many years in her PTA roles that she has done a lot of things for us. Thank you. Thanks. Alright.
You're welcome.
And our next recipient is Amber Howell. She is right here. She is Akron Council PTA's Treasurer. And this year, we have not had a Vice President. So, it's been basically me. And then I say, "Amber, help. I need some help. I've got two units that are in this place that need some treasurer work, and I'm working with this unit over here." And she has more than willing stepped up to the plate. And this is on top of the fact that she's already part of what, three other PTAs or four now?
Four.
Four now. So, yes, she's, she has been awesome. Thank you so much. Our next recipient is Liz Jane. She is in APS's Treasurer area. I have no idea exactly what their title's called. But she, when I have had issues, I have been able to reach out to Jane and went, "Help, I have a PO and I have no idea what has happened to it." Or Jane, somehow Akron Public Schools paid for one of Akron Council PTA scholarships, and we need to give you $500. How do we do that? So, she has gone way above and beyond to help us be able to do our stuff that we need to do and keep our treasure books in order and be able to be accountable to everybody. And I really appreciate all of that help. Yes. Talking on the phone is so much different. Thank you. Our next recipient is someone I've known for years and years, ever since the other cohort, Beth Sendlbach convinced me to go to Akron Council PTA meeting to work on our reflections. And that is Beth Stanley. And Beth Stanley has been one who has helped run our scholarship programs for a number of years. She now also runs the tables. She does the scheduling, and I get to do the invoicing. And if there's anybody here who needs an invoice, I'm sorry, I am way behind. I will get there, I promise. But Beth has been up when I've had a need to make some really late night calls at like 11:30 PM and things. So, I'm really appreciative of all that you do. Thank you. Our last but not least has two people involved, one of which is actually sick tonight, and so she's not able to make it. Jasmine is the cohort with her. The first person's name is Janice. And Janice and Jasmine, Janice is the President, and Jasmine is the Vice President of Schumacher PTA. And I am extremely thankful, and the other reason why I wanted my board here to be able to help support, is because if Jasmine and Janice had not jumped in, I would not be alive today. I was in a PTA meeting with them ironically while my husband was working a scout table at a health fair for Miller's Health. But I started choking. And I was embarrassed. I did not want to interrupt the meeting. So, I was going to just, after doing this at the table for a minute, I was gonna get up and walk to the door towards the end of the library and just push myself up against the tabletop. And within about three steps, the entire membership was going, "Jill, are you okay?" And I shook my head, "No." It wasn't because I was pounding my chest. It was because I couldn't walk. I was already that far into the process. And I didn't know all of this until after it all happened, exactly how long it is, four minutes, and I was probably about three by the time Jasmine did the Heimlich procedure on me, something that not a lot of people know, but they did not hesitate. As soon as they knew I was choking, both Jasmine and Janice jumped into action. And as soon as Janice is going, "My arms are too short," Jasmine spun around and came back. And she took over trying to do the Heimlich, while Janice went and grabbed the trash can. And then the rest of the PTA actually did a really phenomenal thing, and they made sure I was okay before I did anything, before I left. They were making sure I was drinking water and I was able to be cognitively functioning. And I am, I am extremely excited because had I died that night, my mom would have lost all four of her biological children by the age of 55. So, I am extremely thankful, even though I'm crying right now, for Jasmine and for Janice and for Schumacher PTO. I'm glad I didn't wear makeup and be smearing and running. Thank you so much. And thank you guys for letting us recognize everybody here.
Very nice. Congratulations to all of our winners. Very well deserved. It is now my pleasure to welcome you on this very special occasion to our Scholar Recognition for Graduating Seniors who have been chosen to enlist in the military branch. To begin, I want to read some phrases to you. Be all you can be. Twice the citizen. Always courageous. Aim high. Always faithful. Relevant, ready, responsive. Always ready. Protect what matters most to you. Truth and wisdom. If you're not familiar with those phrases, these are the respective mottos for the United States Army, Army Reserve, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Marines Reserve, Coast Guard, the Ohio National Guard, and the University of North Georgia Corps of Cadets. Each of these esteemed organizations has at least one of our scholars, soon to be an Akron Public School graduate, joining their ranks. And we could not be prouder. The models are incredibly meaningful. They are inspiring, and they represent qualities and ideals that we should all aspire to demonstrate daily. So, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Marcy E. Bright, and then I'll conclude with some statement, a statement.
Thank you so much. Thank you Superintendent Ottley, Board members, Board President. Thank you for having us here. These students are truly architects, prepared to thrive in their future. We are so excited to have them here tonight for our first-ever formal board recognition of our military enlisted students. They're here with their families, and they've had a little reception before coming in. So, we got some food in their bellies, talked to them. A lot of them are shipping out next month and through July. So, I'm so excited to have them here tonight. And so, we're gonna kick this off with our Army group. I'm gonna ask them to come in, and I will read their names. And then we're gonna recognize their families, too. So, we have Aaron Beck Holden, Met New, James Rye, Prabesh Sarkey, Alwolso, and Patrick Sovas. And could we please have their families stand in the audience that came and have supported these students? Thank you so much. I'm gonna have you all go stand right over here along this wall and get us started. Okay. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to our next group. Alright. I have Army Reserve as well. Da Hesur, North High School. Alright, turning it over to the Marine Corps.
Hey, good afternoon. Sergeant Smith, local Marine Corps recruiter out here. And these are the applicants that will be joining the Marine Corps after they graduate high school. We have Jordan Anderson, Arty Ma Groom, Dahl Clay, Bibika Limbu, Eliza Rinninger, and Phoenix Valentine, and Brandon Youngs.
That's okay. Thank you so much. Can we ask their families to stand and be recognized and give them a round of applause? Students, turn around and give your family a round of applause. Thank you so much. Lots of kids tonight. Isn't that amazing? Amazing. I had to play Army. I'm so excited. Okay. Our next group, Marine Corps Reserve. Is that me? Oh, okay. Anush Subha from North High School. Alright, not here tonight, but congratulations, Anush. Next group is the Navy.
How y'all doing? Petty Officer Wright with the Navy. Been in about 20 years now, so I'm getting ready to retire. I got three young men strapping young lads here for you. Alexander Gibbons, and then Benjamin Halter, and my boy Hubbard here. He's going MM. He's gonna be in the Seabees, and he's gonna be flying some planes. Well, not really flying them, but launching them and everything like that. That's it.
Hold on, gentlemen. Can I have their family members please stand and be recognized for these young men? Thank you so much. Alright, next up on deck is the Ohio National Guard.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Sergeant Dolly. I'm with the Ohio Army National Guard. And I'm pleased to present Hunter Lawrence, Spencer Sayer, Wayne Rivers, Jonathan Stanovich, and Griffin Starcher. I've gotten the pleasure to know Private Stanovich and Private Lawrence for quite some time now. They went to basic training last summer. They joined as juniors. They are basic combat training graduates, and then they are off to their advanced individualized training this summer. And the other three, I haven't had as much time to get to know yet, but I'm looking forward to what they have to offer. These are the leaders of tomorrow. So, looking to see what they do in the future.
Gentlemen, I'm gonna have you turn around and recognize your families. If they could stand, give them a round of applause. Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna line up over here. Oh, my goodness. Oh, this one's me. Ramon and Salvatore. And this is Salvatore Pastrani. I said that wrong. Pietro Sannate. Come here, say it for me.
Pietro Sannate.
Oh, good. Thank you so much. I'm sorry. I'm joining the University of North Georgia's Corps of Cadets. Thank you so much. Any family members stand up? There we go. Thank you. Got it? Alright, we're gonna have you over here south. And can we have all the family members stand up one more time? Thank you so much for raising amazing kids coming down tonight. Alright, so that's the end of our presentation. We are gonna take some photos. Do you wanna do photos now, Mrs. Ottley? Okay.
To just say to the families, friends, teachers, and administrators who have guided these young people to embody these qualities and enter a life of service to others, you have done a terrific job, and we commend you as well. To our scholars, you have enlisted... Ooh, Marcy, are you excited? I'm excited for you. Thank you for your commitment to demonstrating these qualities, for your dedication to living up to these ideals, and for your willingness to serve our country. We are proud of you and grateful for your service because you are the leaders of tomorrow. Congratulations.
Board President and Superintendent, would you like to stand up and get a picture with the group? Thank you. We can get to our class.
As our families are exiting, if Officer Romine is in the room, if Officer Romine could please come forward. Good evening, Officer Romine.
Good evening.
We are here to celebrate you. So Officer Romine is the SRO assigned to Garfield's CLC. He also serves the community and works with Akron youth as the coordinator of the Akron Police Explorers Program. He was awarded the Optimist International Respect for Law Enforcement Award from the Akron Optimist Club. Officer Romine's dedication to his school, the community, and the Akron Police Department does not go unnoticed. This is the first time an SRO has received this honor. Please help me in congratulating Officer Romine for his achievement. Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
No, ma'am. But I appreciate the honor and I'm just going to try, keep on pushing every day.
Thank you. Madam President, this does conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Ottley. Next, we'll hear from our school board member, Mr. Jordan Leeson, 11th grader at NIFSTEM High School.
Good evening, Madam President, Madam Superintendent, honorable board members, and guests. Hello. I am Jordan Leeson. I am a junior attending NIFSTEM High School. I'm a former member of JLA 38, which is Junior Leadership Akron. I am in the cybersecurity pathway. I plan to enter the IT field upon graduation. I plan to achieve that by going to trade school or going through the cybersecurity courses at the University of Akron. I chose to join the Scholar Board because I want to gain better insight on Akron's educational system and assist in making it better, not only for myself, but for my fellow students as well. I am a current member of Bookto's baseball team and was elected as team captain as a freshman. I made first team all city in my sophomore year and plan to do it again this year, hopefully becoming Player of the Year. I want to talk about the great things going on at STEM High School. It prepares me and my peers for highly demanding jobs, helping us with literacy and technical skills needed for modern jobs. They also provide us hands-on experience with various classes ranging from cybersecurity to engineering. At the same time, something significant about STEM High School is that we only offer honors classes. We work on many of projects that require teamwork and cooperation, which helps us in the work industry because many jobs require those skills. They also encourage us to be creative and curious about what we're learning about, which helps us improve our critical thinking. Overall, they provide me and my peers with a foundation that prepares us for the real worlds and skills essential to the workforce: creativity, collaboration, and resilience for any path in the future. Now, I want to address the concerns and challenges at Akron STEM High School. First, the loss of our auditorium. Initially, we had an auditorium in our old building where faculty would host award ceremonies, assemblies, and showcase school plays and other student-led events. Not to mention, we held our daily meetings and auditorium, allowing us to prepare for our days and share announcements for events like upcoming test dates, student activities being held, and students' activities being held throughout the week. It was a gathering place which was taken away from us, unfortunately. The board should consider investing in an auditorium at STEM High School or a space that can be used for multiple purposes. Secondly, the lack of parking that we're representing in CLC, which is now NIFSTEM High School. My peers and I face daily challenges with parking because there is only one place for drop-off now. Unlike at our old building, there was two places for drop-off, which prevented the amount of traffic that's in the parking lot right now. Also, at the same time, there's a limited amount of parking, which causes stress for me and my peers because we are at risk of being late for class every day. I asked the board for a possible parking expansion to help solve this problem. Some of the students are forced to park on the street, which can cause safety concerns for students, whether it's crossing the street or possible theft. Lastly, the size of the school is inadequate for high school students. We are the only high school housed in an elementary building, which is unfair to us and we deserve better. Not to mention, we produce the best ratings throughout APS. We have undersized hallways and have only two stairwells, and if we try to go up one stairs, one of the stairs that are meant for going down, faculty prevents us from doing so, which creates a disadvantage for me and my peers because you can only go up one and down the other. It's inefficient and timely. For instance, you could have a class on the first floor, but then your next class is on the second floor across the building. Not only that, but the hallways are very limited in space and creates a lot of traffic, which is also a liability for a safety issue. Unlike our old building, we had multiple stairwells and well-sized hallways. I asked the board to create a plan that allows for better traffic flow in the school or look at moving us to a building that fits the needs and size of its students. I want to thank the board and Superintendent Ottley for your time and consideration on these matters I have addressed today. I look forward to working together to resolve these concerns.
Thank you so much, Mr. Leeson. We do appreciate your comments and the suggestions that you brought to this board for consideration. Again, thank you and we appreciate you. Let's give them a round of applause. It takes a lot. All right. Are there any questions or comments, Mr. Alexander, board member?
Yeah, I wanted to, you guys will hear probably a lot more about this because we're going to get this in the newspaper and also, but Jordan was one of the students that went down last Friday to Columbus to present at Ohio School Board Association Leadership Conference, and he and his colleagues did an outstanding job. There were about 100 people in the room. They did an outstanding job. He said he was scared, and we talked about it. I said, Jordan, you weren't scared. He did a very good job. So individuals like him and these others make it, helps me to understand more and believe that and know that we have students that are okay, and we will be okay as we move forward in our lives. So thank you, Jordan. I appreciate you and you're going to do real well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Member Hall.
I just wanted to say it was a pleasure meeting you ahead of time, Jordan. It's exciting that you're a junior and you're coming here with these issues. So I look forward to being able to, if we can't fix all, maybe at least do one, you know, for the rest of your time in high school, but showing that we're hearing you, we're listening, and that we're going to work towards trying to find a solution. Even if you're not here, when it happens, we just want to make sure that you're a part of the conversation. So thank you for having the courage to come and speak up. Thank you. And also letting us know that you said STEM is the number one rating school in APS? Okay, you said that in the represent. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Hall. Are there any other board member comments? All right. Thank you again. We appreciate you joining us on today. Next, we'll entertain a request to address the board. We do have a couple requests. Participants will not be permitted to speak on matters related to vendors, business matters, formal complaints, grievances, specific student or student records, personnel matters, and potential or pending legal matters. Participants must speak on matters related to the business of the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board will not respond, but will assign through the superintendent the appropriate person for follow-up. Please also state your name and group affiliation. The first person we have signed up to address the board is Darren Williams.
Good morning, Madam President and distinguished board members. It is an honor to be here with you today. I must start out by reading this. An African proverb says, "It takes a village to raise a child." Signifies that a child's upbringing and well-being are the responsibility of the entire community, not just their parents. It emphasizes the collective efforts of family members, neighbors, teachers, and other community members in shaping a child's development. My name is Darren Williams. I work for Templeton Transportation. I am an Akron native, 62 years old. I am a product of APS. I graduated John R. Bookto University High School under Ann Gates' program. Isn't that right, LB? Yes, sir. I have children that attended APS. I've got two grandsons getting ready to graduate from Garfield. We'll forget that. But I'm married, my wife of 41 years, and I'm an associate minister, have been a minister in Akron for 30 years. And I'm here today to speak on my experiences getting back into APS through Templeton Transportation. As I started out saying, I believe that it takes an entire village to raise a child. And my experience with some of these children are just heartfelt. I've heard some of the things that their parents say, well, you got to watch for this, watch for this, watch for this. Since November, I have not experienced any of the negativity that I've been told. Some of the schools that I go to, the principals and teachers come up to me and say, what have you done? It's not about me. It's talking, it's listening to these children. It's talking to these children. It's encouraging these children. It's telling them they are somebody because there's a whole lot of people telling them that they're not. The papers are full of negativity. We need to build these children up. And through Templeton Transportation, I have been blessed to be able to reach out to some of these children and give back to them who encouraged me. I went to the old Kraus in the fifth grade. I'm 62 years old, and I can still remember my fifth grade teacher, Mr. James Romano, who poured into me. And I said, as I got older, that's what I want to do. I've coached in this area for 30 years with Pee-wee football, at Bookto freshman team, semi-pro, and I just want to give back. But Templeton Transportation has afforded me that opportunity, not just me, my wife, and it's a team effort. And we just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you. And as I said, it takes a village to raise a child. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to give some information and a couple of resources. My name is Reverend Pamela Pinkney. I am an apostolate. I'm doing something new. I'm the founder and visionary of the People's New Party, which is a multi-partisan party, which is inclusive of all the political parties to do something new through our nation, our city, and our state for good relations. I am a former educator and a published author, and I started the Central State University chapter of the NAACP. I had some concerns about what I saw on April 28th when I was here, and I don't know when is the appropriate time to address those concerns because I feel like when we come here for public comment, I believe whatever our issues are, should be board issues, and I would like to know, Madam President, who I can talk to about my concerns from what I saw on the last meeting, because I don't want what I saw to go overboard and out the window. I wanted to invite you all to the Women's Day at Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church at 1241 Grant Street. Reverend Curtis A. Mentor Sr. is the pastor. His wife is Lady, Elect Lady Tamiko Mentor on the 18th, which is this coming Sunday. If you would be interested, I have a resource also for a summer camp that's free. There's a lady who's hosting a free summer camp. I also have a woman who started her own business with a cleaning service that maybe she could be implemented and instituted in your cleaning processes through the school And that's basically all I wanted to say. I do hope that the woman who was here the last time, that you all hear her concerns and it doesn't become a combative situation. And I would like for you still to consider putting prayer back into the schools in the name of Jesus Christ and let that be an option, as well as an obligation for those of us who stand on our faith. And I thank you for being here, and I thank you for welcoming me. I know there have been some concerns for people who don't know me because of my boldness, but I am not your enemy. Neither am I an enemy to the community or anyone else. And if I can do anything, one of my degree emphasis is in English, and I can help with literacy, teaching, reading, and some other comprehensive skills, and I will be glad to help however I can. I am a licensed ordained minister, and my mom ran the 11th District Congressional Office for Congresswoman Stephanie Tufts-Jones.
Thank you, Apostolate. That concludes our community reflections or requests to address the board. Next, are there any board member reflections? Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. Kev, quite a bit, so I'm going to get through it quickly. I visited Harris Jackson. I will tell you that that is one of the cleanest schools I've been to. I mean, that school was very, very, very clean. From when you walk in, it smells good. So I was like, okay. But, so just a little notes from them. Their ELP program is going great. There's a paraprofessional there who was actual parent, who became a paraprofessional because of her child in the preschool program that was having a little issues. The child is now, I think, in third grade, doing well, and the parent is still present because she said it's important to give back. There was a little gentleman named Jakari. He was a kindergartner. He held the door for me. I mean, the door was bigger than him. He held that door with all his might to make sure I walked through that door. So I just wanted to shout out to you, Mr. Jakari. Thank you so much. I also attended the George C. Miller Scholarship Program. George C. Miller was the first African-American principal in Akron Public School, and Miller South is named after him. And there were four APS students who received the award, and also our very own Jackie Silas Butler received the Education Achievement Award. So when you see her, let her know congratulations. Also, I attended the YSS Community Meeting, which they're creating the out-of-school time and also working with JOGS to employ our students. If students are looking for jobs, it's open right now and it will be starting very soon for summer employment. I think you can make up to $2,400 for the summer. Not bad. I also attended East CLC Assistant Vice Principal Larissa Brown is holding down the fort because their principal is out, so she's holding down both schools. I visited multiple programs, the welding program. I have been notified that their special ed is increasing, so they do need extra help from that. An issue that was there was this recovery program, $50 per credit, I'm sorry, per class per semester, and we're losing a lot of our students to toe path because toe path is free. So we need to figure out a way of assisting these students with this recovery, credit recovery program at the $50. Because I know we talk a lot about the vouchers and our students are going to private schools, but also our kids are leaving to go to toe path because it's free for their credits and they can graduate. So I would be interested in knowing how many kids do we lose per semester, per year to toe path, and how can we look at things differently to keep our students here? Also, they talked about their senior dues. Some of the students said that their senior dues are expensive, and what are different ways and methods of helping our students with our senior dues? I know that we have money that transfer back to the district, and so I'm just interested in seeing how we can help those kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Are there any other board reflections or comments from board members? Member Autry?
Thank you, Madam President. Since we last met, I had the opportunity to attend the Ohio School Board Association Leadership Institute that Vice President Alexander referenced earlier, and I just want to also piggyback and state that along with Mr. Leeson that was here, we also had Zia West from Firestone, we had Shileah Davis from Akron Early College, and we had Deavion Caldwell Sales from Bookto. And those four students, I was told, had the best presentation at the whole conference. Every workshop I went to, they were like, your kids were amazing. And when I looked around the room at the board members from all over the state of Ohio, they were just enthralled, and I was just so proud that they saw our Ohio, they were just enthralled, and I was just so proud that they saw our children. They saw beyond the headlines. They saw our children for what they were, which are excellent, well-spoken young people. They shared how they felt empowered by our district, how they've been able to develop their leadership skills and advocacy skills. I think it was Mr. Caldwell-Sales mentioned that an initiative he had as a result of this feeling empowered is to offer a movie night to decrease flicks at Bookto. And he had data and said that their flicks were down by 20% as a result of that. Also, the young lady from Akron Early College had mentioned about not having sports at their school, but as a result of feeling empowered, they have been able to develop a track club. So she was happy about that as well. So just to hear them speak out and share, and again, they were just the hit of the whole leadership, and it was refreshing, and we need that because that's what we're here for. Also, I, they had a mock meeting, and they presented it to us in a kind of a comedic way, it was kind of funny, but it was also sharing some true challenges that they've seen from board members throughout the state of Ohio. They talked about texting during meetings. They are hearing more and more concerns about that because it can give the wrong or the right impression to those who might be watching us. They talked about chain of command during this mock meeting, and there was folks who had issues with coaches and trying to address it through the school board members, but of course, we know we should be following a chain of command. As my time is coming to an end, I just wanted to also shout out Mrs. Reiman Schneider, second grade class at King, who I had the opportunity to read to last week, they were amazing. And then also shout out to Bookto's Cosmetology Program, their senior report out hair show, that was amazing, collaboration between cosmetology and our masonry program. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Autry. Are there any other board member reflections? Yes, Member Molinar?
Thank you, President Jackson. First, I want to start off and acknowledge May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And so I encourage everyone to take this month and this opportunity to connect, listen, learn from and about your neighbors in the AAPI community. We have so many different cultures, histories, experiences represented right here in Akron. One month really can only scratch the surface as it is with all of these months, but there's something that everyone can discover and learn, every single person. So I encourage everyone to talk to and learn from and with a neighbor. Next, I will second what Member Autry said about the OSBA meeting. We did have so many people come up to us and just gush over how impressed they were by our students. We have amazing students, amazing programs, and amazing things happening here at Akron. And so also with the mock meeting, we not only have things to share, but we have things to learn. We go to these OSBA meetings to do both of those things, it's a symbiotic experience. And so with that, I do have a resolution for New Business that I passed around to everyone today that I will discuss later. I want to say, I, you know, I hear, I grow, I learn, and we all do as board members, so I will talk about that later. But one thing that was a huge challenge for a lot of the districts there that I think is another thing that we have to be proud of is our connection and our relationships with our representatives. We are representatives, but we have great relationships with our representatives. There are a lot of board members there who are trying to reach out, trying to connect, and getting silence and dead air. And there are even people who said that they have a bus tour, that they try to go through their district, and that's encouraging the representatives to come in and spend time in their district, and it's something important to do before the levy, to really highlight your programs and highlight that. And then at the Teacher of the Year banquet at May 8th that I visited, we had two representatives there, we had a senator there, we had a state rep there. I know our Representative Sims has been at so many of our meetings, and she's here all the time. We have probably a million pictures, we don't need a bus tour for, at the national level, Representative Sykes. So we are so lucky to be so well represented, represented, but still, I think that we can do more to share our story and reach out and highlight our students, and that is what I will finish talking about at New Business.
Thank you, Member Molinar. Are there any other board reflections? Comments? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the President's Report. Absolutely, and thank you for standing up. I did not receive the information, so absolutely, please give your name and come to the podium. Now, each of you, if, I don't know if each of you are talking, you're talking as a collective, but the time will start once you talk and you just state your name. The preamble has already been read, so please.
Good evening. I'm Selena Sherpa, and this is Bibi Kalimbu, and this is Sakcham Shubha, and that is Nima Tamang, and this is Pratimagurung. And we are Green Akron Initiative. It's a club in, it's a Hosa Club at North High School, and we need your help. We are proud students of North High School, and we are eager to share an exciting achievement. We earned third place at the recent Hosa 2025 State Leadership Conference. This accomplishment is particularly significant as it makes us the only Akron Public School team to qualify for the prestigious Hosa International Leadership Conference this year. Our journey to this point reflects months of dedicated effort, strong collaboration, and passionate advocacy for both environmental health and community wellness. Throughout this school year, our team has actively engaged initiatives such as organizing community cleanups, fundraising to support local environmental organizations, promoting importance of planting native seeds and other sustainable practices, upcycling discarded materials into useful resource, delivering informative educational presentation at younger APS students, and overall encouraging community members of all ages to participate in environmental action. However, it is with deep disappointment that we have learned that due to a lack of sufficient funding may prevent us from attending and competing as, at Hosa International Leadership Conference. As the Class of 2025 Future Health Professionals, we have invested a significant amount of time and effort, both virtually and in person. And, okay. Our members, dedicated advisors, and supporting committee members are deeply concerned that financial limitations could jeopardize this invaluable opportunity for us and potentially hinder our growth. We respectfully and earnestly request that board support in overcoming this financial obstacle. Your assistance would be instrumental in empowering us to proudly represent Akron Public Schools on an international stage and would allow us to continue developing crucial skills that are valuable to our future career. Thank you for your time and careful consideration. We would be incredibly grateful for the opportunity to discuss this matter further with you at your convenience. Your engagement has been invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, North High School students, for presenting that to this board. The treasurer had a question. Dr. Thompson?
Thank you. So what, what can one of you come up, your spokesperson, or all of you, however you want to do it? So my question is, how much money do you need? Do you have a budget? And when do you need this money?
So on June 18th to, I think it's till June 22nd, we're gonna go to Tennessee-Nassville, that's where the internationals are. And one of my teachers was saying it'll take like thousands of dollars, so.
How many of you will go?
So there's five of us in the group and plus probably a chaperone.
Okay. So hotels and transportation is what you need?
Yes.
Do you need, is there a fee to, for you to attend the competition?
I don't think there's a fee.
Okay. Okay. And who is your, who's your chaperone?
Ms. Tamika Thompson.
No relation. Now it all comes clear, doesn't it? Okay, well, I'll be in contact with her, and we'll see, and I'll work with the superintendent and see what we can find, see if we can help.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Again, thank you. I'm so glad, see, that's the great thing about democracy and knowing how to agitate, to stand up so that their voices were heard. That's a beautiful thing that we witnessed just now. Moving on, we will now have the President's Report. As we continue through the month of May and prepare to close out the 2024-25 school year, I'm pleased to provide the following updates and important announcements. Assessment season has started. Thank you for Instructional Policy Committee for that, the academic updates, which I'll be sharing on today. Students in grades nine through 12th grade will be participating in star assessments from May 19th through May 30th. These assessments play a crucial role in helping us understand student academic progress and needs. We urge all students, please read all the questions carefully, get plenty of rest the night before, eat healthy meals, because when you eat high sugary diets, then you start off jittery and then you crash, which will impact your data, and also pace yourself during testing. Again, we'd like to thank our educators and families for supporting students as they go through this important process. PSYOP training, Summer Professional Development also is being offered to Akron Public Schools. PSYOP stands for Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, and the training is to empower educators with strategy for making content more accessible and engaging to all learners. Most people are familiar with PSYOP for English language learners, but it's impactful and effective for all learners. It is being offered to any Akron Public School teacher that has not taken it before, and they will receive four continuing education units, I'm sorry, not four, 2.4 CEUs, and a stipend. However, they must attend all sessions. The sessions will be held for primary grades, which is grades kindergarten through the fifth grade, right here at 10 North Main Street, June 9th through the 12th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., as well as August 11th through the 14th. However, the August sessions will take place at Forest CLC. Secondary grades will receive training, that's grades six through 12, June 9th through the 12th, same timeframe here at 10 North Main Street. However, the second session, which will also be offered in August, August 11th through the 14th, the location is to be determined. Again, if you, the CEUs for teachers help to make sure they're staying up to date with the requirements for their Ohio State Teaching License, and so it's great when it's being offered within the district, and so those who are able to take it, who haven't taken it, it's a great opportunity. Tomorrow, and someone, I don't know if a board member or someone will be able to chime in, because I don't remember the date, but I know I seen Ms. Wilson, and she told us that May Festival is happening tomorrow. And those of you who are familiar with the May Festival, I remember, it took place in the May Festival, Mr. Patrick O'Shea was my music teacher at Berry Elementary. And the event showcases student talents in visual and performing arts across the district. We invite this community and the greater Akron community to attend and support our students as well. Our third grade teachers are leading an engaging project-based learning unit on life cycles. Students have been nurturing eggs in their classroom, and chicks will soon be hatching. Ms. Alasa shared this with us, and I'm excited that this experience will be available for everyone to view via our YouTube channel, so if you get a moment, that would be great to chime in for that. As we head into the summer, additionally, I want to remind families to continue supporting student learning by visiting the Akron Summit County Public Library, which we're excited that the issue 18, I believe, passed, because our library has great resources, books, program, and learning tools that are free to you. All you have to do is sign up for a library card, and this can help us assist in preventing summer slide. Additionally, signing up for summer camps and enrichment programs offered throughout the district, by the district, and by the greater community. These resources also will help to keep our students engaged and help prevent issues and trouble that comes when there's idle time. Also, I would like to remind families, please to look on our Akron Public School websites about our schools and what they offer also. This is graduate, excuse me, it's graduation season, so we hope that many families are able to participate as well as community members. Lastly, as Ms. Autry was explaining, I also had the opportunity to attend Bookto's Senior Cosmetology Hair Show, which is a project-based culminating activity. The students are, were very innovative, they had to meet certain requirements, and it counts towards their grades and towards their graduation. It truly was a remarkable experience. The event was a celebration of student talent, dedication, and creativity. What I really also was excited about, because I've talked so much about student work in our masonry programs and the opportunity that students have here at Akron Public Schools, the set design was crafted by our own Bookto Masonry students, and it was, it was impressively executed and provided the perfect backdrop for the showcase. The student stylists presented themed hair designs that were both innovative and entertaining, clearly demonstrating not only their growing skills in cosmetology, but also their creativity and passion for the craft. And this year marks a major milestone for the aesthetics and cosmetology pathway at Bookto CLC. For the first time since 2021, students are once again eligible to sit for the Ohio State Board of Cosmetology exam. To obtain a cosmetology license in Ohio is not easy. Students must complete 1,500 hours of training, a goal that many of this year's graduating seniors have worked diligently to achieve. We're thankful for the students, their intestinal fortitude, and as well as Mr. Dentson and the great work that he is doing in the cosmetology pathway. This does conclude the President's Report. Are there any questions? Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to the Superintendent's Report or Updates.
Thank you, Madam President. It is with deep sadness that I inform you of the loss of an early learning student at Mason CLC. I ask that you join me in keeping his family in our thoughts. I am pleased at this time to announce that we had three students accepted into the Thrive Scholars Program. This is a six-year wraparound service, starting from high school through college completion program that supports students for enrollment in the matriculation through highly selective universities and begins between the sophomore and junior year. With students spending six weeks at a highly selective school over the summer, this opportunity is an all-expense-paid experience, and it includes a stipend at the end of the summer because the students are not able to have a summer job. These students will be attending the Thrive Summer Academy, June 20th through the 31st, at Amherst College. This will be a very prestigious and educational experience for our scholars. The three students are Simon Kong Bick Thong from North High School, Annabelle Cook from NIFSTEM High School at Robinson CLC, and Patience Kinemon from Ellett CLC. We congratulate those scholars. We also have celebrated and are planning to celebrate some very important days for our staff, beginning with School Principal Day, which was May 1st. We also have celebrated School Lunch Hero Day that took place on May 2nd. Teacher Appreciation Week, May 6th through 10th. Ohio School Bus Driver Appreciation Day took place on May 6th. National Teacher Appreciation Day, as well as nurses, National School Nurse Day on May 6th. National Interpreter Appreciation Day on May 7th. And School Communicators Day on May 9th. We wish a happy belated Mother's Day to all of our APS staff who fulfill that role, even if it is to four-legged fur babies. Everyone, we wish you a happy Mother's Day. Coming up is our National Speech Pathologist Day on May 18th and Memorial Day on May 26th. I would like to share some exciting news about a past teacher and coach, Michael J. Woltzer, who retired from Akron Public Schools. He was selected by Marcus Who's Who for a prominent feature in the Ohio edition of the Wall Street Journal, published on March 27th. Congratulations to him. We did have a parent reach out, a former parent reach out, Lillian Barnes, about a staff member who works at Bookto CLC. I'm not clear on the staff member's name, so if this is not correct, we will follow up with a correction. But I want to give a shout out to Cindy Slum, who met our former parent, Ms. Barnes, at Pulp. And they were conversing over the needs of her daughter, who is very sweet and she is very helpful. And the parent appreciated how much the teacher was knowledgeable and she could tell just how much she loves what she does when she works with our students. So she just wanted to take a moment to recognize Cindy Slum from Bookto CLC and the work that she does for our students even beyond the school day. We would also like to conclude by thanking all of our partners, families, and supporters who generously donate and provide grants and supports to our scholars. And please know that your contributions are truly appreciated. And now, on to our Be Kind 330. Doing the right thing, even when no one is looking, this is what kindness looked like at its best. After leaving the cafeteria, a Bookto sixth grader accidentally picked up another student's Chromebook. Rather than leaving it in the hallway or ignoring it, he took the extra step to bring it to the main office so it could be returned to its rightful owner. This small but thoughtful action shows the power of doing the right thing and being responsible. It's a perfect example of kindness and we encourage this to happen at all of our schools. So thank you to our counselor, Jennifer Mitchell, for sharing this story and highlighting the importance of being kind to each other. Madam President, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Autry, next we'll have the treasurer report. Yes, please, Member Sykes.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Superintendent, members of the board, it is, it is quite sad to start off with the announcement that we've lost another student. And I can remember a few weeks ago when a parent or grandparent was here and she talked about how she had lost a child and she had not received anything from the school system to acknowledge that. And then maybe last week it was in the paper, something to the effect, the same lady. So I'm thinking, Madam President, if perhaps we can, if the committee could look at what the school can do to recognize our, our students who have passed. I did talk to Representative Sims about this to make sure that we would not be in any situation with the state if we offered some level of acknowledgement during graduation time of that, of individual students. Or if they're on another level, whatever we do during graduation to acknowledge the student. I mean, I think you could see the hurt in the parent's face when she talked about we had not done anything to acknowledge that child. Because what she was basically saying is, this is what, this is, this is the main thing that our children do before they turn 18, is that they attend Akron Public Schools. And to make that, that acknowledgement formally, that they were here, that we saw them, that they count, that they belong to us, that they were our child. And that, yes, it takes a village to raise a child and that when one passed, that we, we all, we all suffer. And so, Madam Chair, I would ask, Madam President, if perhaps we could, you could assign it to a committee that we could start looking at what we can do. Madam Superintendent, from administrative stance standpoint during the graduation season to acknowledge our families and our children who have passed during the school year.
Thank you so very much for that, Member Sykes, excellent, excellent, and very par. Member Hall?
Just to piggyback off of that, Ms. Sykes, I think that's a wonderful idea. I know some people had talked about maybe like an honorary diploma for the deceased and maybe, and give it to their family. So I think that's a great idea to honor those who did not have an opportunity to graduate.
Thank you, Member Hall, Member Autry.
Thank you, Madam President. And so, as a member of the Policy Committee, I did read that article. And I know that Cleveland Metropolitan School District, they do have a policy, so we have somewhere where we can start. And I just wanted to say that out loud, so we're not starting from scratch.
Thank you, Member Autry. All right, next we'll have the treasurer's report.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Autry, the focus in the treasurer's department is on two things, as you could imagine, five-year forecast and year in close. So we are diligently working on those two things and of course, we have a presentation this evening.
Thank you for that conclusion. Okay, thank you, Dr. Thompson. Okay, next, we have the approval of the board minutes from the April 28th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for April 28th?
I make a motion to approve the board meeting minutes from Monday, April 28th, 2025.
Thank you, it's been moved by Member Hall, is there a second?
A second.
It's been seconded by Member Autry in a discussion. Okay, seeing and hearing none, Dr. Thompson, roll call, please.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Initially, we have the approval of the special board meeting, meaning, board meeting minutes, excuse me, for May 5th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the special board meeting minutes for May 5th, 2025?
I move to approve the minutes for the special board meeting held on May 5th, 2025.
Thank you, it's been moved by Member Autry, is there a second?
A second.
It's been seconded by Member Hall, is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Seven, passes 7-0.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next is our personnel recommendations, Ms. Autry.
Thank you, President Jackson. Does the board have any questions about the personnel items for Section 10?
Thank you, Member Hall, you're recognized.
Thank you, Superintendent Autry. Just my quick question, with our recommendations in our staff, I'm sorry, personnel recommendations. Every board meeting, we look at the form and it shows like retirement or resignation and things like that. And I know that we are trying to cut back and put a dent into that $10 million that we need to cut. Is there anywhere where maybe in the June or July meeting, that we can have a, like, not, not a document showing people's names, but how much money have we put back into the system from retirements and resignations from like January to end of school? And then like what type of, Dr. Thompson, dent does that put into the $10 million that we need to save on?
So yes, so the first time you'll get that, well, the next time, we will present that at the next board meeting. And that will be 10, represent 10.2 million dollars in reductions. So that will be what we're currently working on. And then we'll work on further reductions, so you should see what we're presenting at the next board meeting.
There's a follow-up?
Yes.
Could there just be a space that shows from January 1st to end of school, retirement and resignations, how much money?
By each item?
That has put, it doesn't have to be in, like, it could just be one simple line to just give a full total of how much is being put back in the district from retirements and resignations. I know we'll eventually have to use some of that to bring in teachers and things like that, but I'm just curious to see how much money we actually, that comes back from retirements and.
That we did not use towards the reductions that we'll be sharing.
No, 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 it's not about using the money at all. It's just how much money would go back from retirements and resignations back into the school district.
Okay.
We can talk a little bit later off of that offline.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding because first, when we receive a retirement or resignation, we just, we work with our human capital department to determine if that's going to be a reduction. And if so, it would show up in the reductions. If it's not a reduction, then we would just fill the vacant position, so it's not a savings.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, because, yeah, because I know we don't, I'm sorry, I might be out of line.
Yeah, because you did a follow-up, you recognized.
So I'll talk to offline, that's fine, thank you.
Are there any other discussions or questions, as posited by Ms. Autry? All right.
Are there any questions regarding Section 11? Are there any questions regarding Section 12, supplemental contracts? Are there any questions regarding Section 13, substitute teachers? Section 14, tutors? Section 15 is support staff. Are there any questions regarding Section 16, paraprofessionals? Section 17, child nutrition? Section 18, maintenance, operation, transportation? Section 19, security? Hearing no additional questions, I wish to recommend the approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories 10 through 20. There were no items for Section 20.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations from Sections 10 through 20?
Madam President, I move that we accept the personnel recommendations from 1 through 20.
10 through 20. Is there a second to approve?
A second.
Thank you, it's been moved and properly seconded by Member Hall, is there any discussion? Yes, Member Vice President Alexander?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to recognize two people who I, one I failed to state last meeting and one this meeting. Two, both of these teachers are teachers at Firestone High School, they've been there for a long time, they work really good with our students. The time my daughters were there years ago and the times in between and currently, they, they've done a very good job with our students, teaching the students, interfacing with our students and making sure they, the students get the best. And those two individuals are Jenny Walls, who is retiring next month, and also Jill Hanogowski, he was retired. Those two teachers have done a lot for all of our kids there at Firestone High School. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Is there any, are there any other questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing, seeing and hearing none, Dr. Thompson, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Ms. Autry?
Thank you, President Jackson. Does the board have any questions about the division recommendations, resolutions, and motions for Section 22? Seeing no questions, I wish to recommend the approval of the division recommendations, resolutions, and motions in Section 22.
Is there a motion to approve the division and recommendation resolutions and motions in Section 22?
I move to accept the division recommendations, resolutions, and motions in Section 22.
Thank you, it's been moved by Member Autry, is there a second?
Seconded.
It's been seconded by Member Hall, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Dr. Thompson, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
And Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next is the Business Affairs Recommendation, Ms. Autry.
Does the board have any questions for Section 23?
Member Hall?
The, for Section 22, I'm sorry, 25, 22.6, for the resolution for the architect firm?
Member Hall, we already approved that we're at 23 in the agenda.
Wait, where's my 23?
Business Affairs.
Got it, my papers are, numbers are off, okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Are there any questions? Seeing and hearing none.
I wish to recommend the approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in Category 23.
Is there a motion to approve the Business Affairs Recommendations in Category 23?
I make a motion that we accept the Business Affairs Recommendations in Section 23.
It's been moved by Vice President Alexander, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Autry, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call vote, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next, we will have our committee reports, legal contracts, and board policy.
Thank you, Madam President. We do not have a report this evening, but we will be meeting on May 19th at 5:30 in this room. The committee will continue to discuss and introduce, to continue to discuss policies and introduce students' bills. and introduce student bill of rights with a short presentation to go with that. There's a next, the 19th, May 19th at 5:30 in this room, policy committee meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Next is finance and capital management.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Capital Management Committee will meet May 19th, 4:30 in this boardroom.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Instructional policy and student achievement. Member Autry?
Thank you, Madam President. The Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee met on this past Monday, May the 5th. We had several presentations. The first one was from Beth Winter and Clayton Kundiff on Dream Days. Dream Day 1.0 was a day for seniors to come together and hear keynote speakers, attend conference sessions on the four Es, enrollment, enlistment, employment, and entrepreneurship, and attend a career college military fair. And I was told that Ms. Culver is, this was an idea that she birthed. Dream Day 2.0, which is the current iteration of Dream Day, is when juniors declare their E at the end of their junior year, and they are given a checklist of items to complete each quarter of their senior year to prepare them for their chosen E. And what I liked about that, as they shared that the checklist was inspired by students, because they kept saying, this is too much. And so we were able to see the checklist. It was very comprehensive and easy to follow. So I think that was a really, really good roadmap to their future. Seniors attend culminating events, conferences, and career fairs for the E that they have chosen during their senior year. Also, we had a presentation from Don Wilson, our fine arts leader. And it's been 16 years since they had a textbook adoption. And so thanks to all of the committees who voluntarily come together for that very extenuating process. But they will be adopting the following curriculum for our consideration, K through 12 Visual Arts, the art of education, K through 8 General Music, Quaver Music, Purposeful Pathways, and Marimba Music for Little Kids. Music Theory and AP Music Theory will have Alfred's Essentials of Music Theory and Total Harmony. 6 through 12 Choral Music will have Habits of a Successful Choral Musician, Make Music, and Sight Reading Factory. And 5 through 8 Instrumental Music will have New Designs for Strings, Habits of a Successful Beginning Strings, Beginner Band, Middle School Musician, Make Music, and Elements of Jazz. And so I was happy to hear that all of our scholars, I know we hear a lot about our Performing Arts School in Miller South, but all of our schools are able to be touched by music. And so thanks to Don Wilson and her team, Madam President mentioned May Festival, which is tomorrow at the Civic at 6:00 PM. This is the 98th year. And so I don't know if my culture has anything else to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Autry. There is no unfinished business, however, there is new business. Member Molinar?
Thank you, Madam President. I drafted a resolution, and I passed it around to everyone. This is not a resolution for us to vote on today, but rather for us to add to the agenda for the next board meeting. So I'd like to explain it to everyone. The purpose of the resolution is to create a standing committee of the board dedicated to highlighting and celebrating student achievements across our district, and to ensure our community hears about the outstanding work of our students aligned with our mission and values. So the rationale is there's been a lot of talk lately about our meetings being too long, and our meetings needing to be action-focused. So a committee would be more appropriate to provide adequate time and meaningful celebration. So today is a really great example. Our meeting started at 5:30 today, and our first action was actually over an hour later. And actually, we had less than 15 minutes of action today. I was watching the clock in preparation for new business. But, but why did we do that? We did that because today we had our first ever showing of military enlistment students. That was beautiful. That's not something that we needed to rush through. That's something that we need to have and to show. We also had a group of North High students come today and say they're possibly attending an international competition. If they go, they would not be the only students we have this year attending and possibly placing or winning international competitions. We have amazing students doing amazing things. And being able to focus on the students, another thing that in Community Reflections we're hearing people say again and again, focus on our students, have shorter meetings. And while the Instructional Policy Committee selects programs and materials, as Member Autry just shared, this new committee would focus on communicating the impact of those programs and the student success stories. So it would improve community engagement, student morale, public awareness of district excellence. So these are also things that at OSBA, ODU is asking for us to have, is specific examples of what we're doing. And so policy alignment, we have Policy 0155 to allow the Board to form a standing committee. We also, right now, have, we're kind of down a committee, right? And so I respectfully request that this resolution be added to the May 27th regular board meeting, agenda for a discussion, and possibly a vote.
Excellent, Member Molinar. Excellent rationale and resolution. So it's been noted to be added to the upcoming meeting per Member Molinar. I don't know why I keep pausing with all that, which, that's it, it's added. I don't think, it's no big action that needs to be taken with that, and it's a real worthy resolution. So thank you for bringing it to the Board, Member Molinar. Okay, there is, is there, there is no other new business that I'm aware of. With that being said, there is a need to recess and to executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the employment dismissal and discipline of a public employee and/or officials, 121.22G3 to conference with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, and 121.22G4 prevent, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I make the move, Madam President, we go into executive session to discuss the items and other ORC that you referenced.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Alexander and seconded by Member Autry. Is there any discussion? Member Molinar?
Thank you, Madam President. I see there are three rationales for going into executive session. Does that mean we are going to be discussing three items in executive session?
That's exactly what it means. Member Molinar?
Okay, so just one for each? Okay.
Yes, that's mine, yep. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Seeing and hearing none, Dr. Thompson, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. We stand in recess at 7:02.
We stand back in session from our recess into executive session. Is there a motion to approve the settlement release found in item 28.1?
Madam President, I move that we approve the settlement and release contained in item 28-1 of our agenda.
Thank you, Member Harrison. It's been moved by Member Harrison. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Member Alexander. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing on Dr. Thompson, roll call, please.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Is there a motion to approve the supplemental contract found in 28.20, 28.2 in the agenda? Member Harrison?
If I may, Madam President, offer a motion to not approve that item in 28.2. So I will make a motion that we do not accept the...
Supplemental contract?
That item in 28.2.
Okay. Member Harrison, there's a motion on the floor to not approve the supplemental contract found in item 28.2. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Member Autry. Is there any discussion? Member Harrison?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, there is a responsibility we have as board members. I do believe that we should support educators, we should support administrators, and we should support building principals. I believe that that is something that they are tasked with leading that building, and they should be leading the building as they see fit, but in some cases where there is a community interest. I think board members have been elected to be the voice of the community, and we need to not only balance the voice that we hear in the community, but we need to do that with our own personal good sense. I would say that I am not in favor of this hire. I don't know the person personally, but I've heard from the community, and what we have heard from the community, I think, says to us that we should reconsider this person as a hire, and we should move in a different direction. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Harrison. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Dr. Thompson, roll call vote, please.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, May 27, 2025, here in the boardroom at 5:30 p.m. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Molinar. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Vice President Alexander. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. We stand adjourned at 10:01 p.m.